President.
Mayor Kayler.
President. Tonight, we have Reverend Thaddeus Thompson here with the Ninth Street Tabernacle, and he's going to be doing our invocation. If you'll come on up to the podium, Reverend Thompson. And our pledge of allegiance tonight will be by John Holt Gru. He's a Paducah Tillman Junior. So if everyone will stand, please.
Father, we ask your continual blessings upon the city of Paducah and upon this agenda for tonight's meeting. We ask it in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
Madam Mayor, there are none.
Okay. So, tonight, we have Molly Thomasello here with us for the Christmas Parade winners. And the theme of this year's parade was red, white, and blue, and we had some beautiful entrance into the parade. Molly?
Hi. Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think this year's parade far exceeded our expectations. There was a certain energy kind of running through the streets. I think it was Christmas and pride for the country, and we just really appreciate everybody and all your hard work and creativity that went into all the floats this year and your participation. So, without taking up too much time, I would just like to thank our judges. We had three this year: Steve Doolittle, Andy Wiggins, and Kathy Reese. I think they did a great job. And every year, you get the judging criteria, and there's all kinds of guidelines and rules, but the main things are, they look at mechanics, they look at aesthetics, they look at creativity, the size of the float, the overall, how well does it match the theme or your particular theme. And this year, literally, you could do red, white, and blue, or you could do traditions that we have here in the United States. So, I thought the parade was very well represented. So what we're going to do here is have two helpers with me here today. I'd like to introduce Malachi Jayden Sims. I believe he's in the first grade. He is also with Cub Scout Pack 20. He's going to be handing out some trophies here. And Taylor Morsing, who works for the Park Services. So the first category we're going to talk about is the themed float division. This year's first place in the themed float division was Cub Scout Pack 20. You guys can just walk this way a little bit. Perfect.
Oh, yeah. He's great.
There may be a few that aren't here tonight. They'll be picking theirs up at the Park Office this week. Third place for the themed float division was Highland Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Thank you, guys. Fourth place for the themed float division, Easter Seals. Thank you so much. Fifth for the themed float division, Cub Scout Pack 2018. Thank you. The next division was non-float, and I'll kind of go backwards on this one. Third place, Oakview Nursing and Rehab. Second place, Paducah Jeep Owners Club. Thank you so much. And first place for non-float division is Blackburn Farms. Thank you. In the school float category, third place was Clark Elementary. Thank you. Second place, MSU Paducah. And first place in the school float category goes to Saint Mary's School System. Thank you. In the drill team division, third place goes to Silver Linings Homeschool Color Guard. Second place is Paducah Quick Step Cloggers. They won't be here tonight to receive this. And first place goes to Center Stage Dance Company. Thank you. In the band category, second place goes to Paducah Tillman High School Band of Blue. Thank you. And first place this year goes to McCracken County High School Band. In the religious float category, third place goes to Church of Jesus Christ Youth. Second place goes to Ninth Street Tabernacle Ministries. And first place in the religious float category goes to Trinity United Methodist. Thank you. And that concludes our float awards for this year, but thank you for allowing us to present here and everybody for participating this year, and we look forward to seeing what you have for next year.
Thank you, Malachi. You did a great job. Okay, tonight, I'm proud to have, I'm not sure that everyone's here, but we will announce all the names for the Mayor's Student Christmas Ornament Contest winner. And in the K through third category, we had first, second, and third place in all of these categories. First place is Eliza Esper.
Thank you, Eliza. You want me to come down there? Second place in the K through third category is Nikisha Davis. And she did a lot of Santa Claus from McNabb School, Eliza's from Clark's. Third place is Ferris Baker. And he had a ball covered and a Paducah Sun newspaper. It was very unique, Saint Mary's. And please stop by the tree on your way out and see all of these wonderful ornaments. Fourth through eighth category, first place was Marina Singler. She had a quilt ornament from Saint Mary's. Thank you. It was beautiful. Have you seen it on the screen? And it was a "World in His Hands" box from McNabb School. Third place, Azin Greenway. I'm sorry?
Asian egg.
Asian egg?
Green egg.
Okay. Thank you. And you have your Christmas box, and it was beautiful. You want to take your picture? And what school are you from? And I'll send it to your principal, okay? In the ninth through twelfth category, we had 25 entries in this. First place is Elizabeth Barnes. She did a Chief Paducah Cardboard. She's from Tillman, and it was beautiful, and you have great future. And you have a lot of family talent also there.
That's her last name?
Barnes. Oh. Yeah. Second place, Anitra Hill. And she did a dogwood, and it's beautiful.
It's her son. That's her granddaughter.
No. Well, it's not to do with you. And third place, Autumn Summers. And she did a Washington Clay from Tillman. Thank you so much, Autumn. Ready? Thank you so much. And when I was talking to Ruth, she said what she did with her class at Tillman, she just threw a bunch of things out on a table and told them to pick something out and be creative. So, they did a great job. Thank you so much for always including your students. Oh, you're welcome. We look forward to it. It's a lot of fun.
So, next, we have a presentation on the aquatics facility for the Paducah swim team. And who's going to be the spokesperson?
We're going to kind of split our duties.
All right.
Just make sure I know how this thing works here. I appreciate your time. I want to start this off, and then Jackie Smith will talk about the funding here. I appreciate everyone's time, and I want to spend a little bit of time telling you, I'm Shroud Patel. I'm one of the surgeons that moved here eight years ago. I'm extremely passionate about this. I came here eight years ago as a transplant. And to be frank with you, the thing that got me here, number one is my wife, number two is, I looked at this town and I saw the Carson Center. When I saw the Carson Center, I assumed that a town with this much passion and forward thinking would have other ancillary facilities. Fast forward eight years later, I'm now committed to this community. I will die in Paducah. And so, when I speak, I think I hold a lot of weight in my words. Our group has built a $15 million facility that has cemented orthopedics here. The problem that, a couple of years ago, people were being shipped out to Nashville for basic medical needs. We're taking care of everyone in the hometown. Now, it's time for the town to grow. And the problem that I'm having is, this Friday, I'm trying to recruit two hand surgeons. And what we don't have is something for the daily burn. And what I mean by that is, the Carson Center is great two or three times a year, but we need, our vision here is to create a health center for Western Kentucky. I'm tired of going to other areas that are smaller than we are and having better facilities. So, our natatorium is our huge vision. Number one, swimming changes lives. The number one cause of death in a child right now, trauma, is drowning. Nine to 10 people a day in the U.S. die of drowning. This combats, you know, childhood obesity, which is a big problem, not only in Western Kentucky, but in all the United States, but it is a bigger problem in Kentucky. What swimming teaches you is work ethic. No one sits on the bench. You know, we've now got these huge high schools, which are great, but now more and more kids are not available to play quarterback anymore. We have an opportunity. I'm now president of the swim team, and I'm telling you that we are growing and we need a facility that matches what we need to do. Now, right now, our current swimming facility is Paducah Athletic Club, and I'll tell you, I'm grateful to the Hagan family because they have done more for swimming than anyone else in this town. But now, we've outgrown that facility. And our vision is, what we need is an Olympic-sized pool to become, for us, the center for Western Kentucky, Southern Illinois, to be the hub of swimming and be, what I would see is that the, kind of the health hub of this area. We want to, right now, we have a program that's up to about 80 kids. We want to build this up to 200 competitive swimmers, develop a learn-to-swim program. And the one, I'm from Chicago. When I went through high school, it was mandatory that you would swim and learn how to swim before you graduated. What we need to do with this facility, we're not just doing this, the swim team is a small part of this. This is for the community. So, every kid coming through all these high schools would have an opportunity to come through, get, learn a competency so that they can swim, so that when they leave, when they graduate Paducah, that everyone has that skill. We'll also be able to provide services for handicap, for rehab, and this kind of branches out to much more than just the 80 to 200 kids that we have in our program. Right now, we have people that come to train for triathletes, triathlons in Paducah that drive all the way to Carmodyle just for, to have a long course pool. The other benefits, before we get into specifics, are, I just, I want to see the city grow. I've had a lot of pressure from, where do you want to build this facility? You know, is McCracken the obvious choice because we have the big high school there? I want to kind of start getting back to the core of this town. And the core of this town is this city, and that where it needs to be built is right in our city to give access to kids that don't have the means to drive all the way out to the county. We need to keep the pack and keep the pack to address the Mayfield kids, the Grave County, Ballot County out there, but we need to start getting back to our roots right here, getting back to the Noble Park area and create a center where we have public transportation that can get everyone to the center of the facility. As far as the number one, like my wife said, the elephant in the room is, that's great, I know you want to do it, but it's going to cost money. What I'm begging the city is to look at, you look at, I'm sure that the Carson Center runs at a deficit, but the Carson Center brought me here. And if you look at the snowball effect, now we have an orthopedic institute. It's going to bring in other professionals to this area. And so, you lose, wherever you lose money on that end, you're going to gain a big money on the amount of volume it brings. Every swim meet we go to, we spend money at a hotel, we spend money at Smoothie King and so on, and all the other places in the shops. It's going to bring in not only just traffic, but it's going to bring other professionals in here. I guarantee you now, people coming out of training are going to be more apt to look at, what can mom do, what can our kids do on a daily basis than just the restaurants that they can eat at? So, how do we get there? We got lucky. We started in May looking for a top-notch coach. We have a, Chris Rowe is our new coach. He's a five-time All-American swimmer from Auburn, kind of gave up, kind of committed his life to coaching. He was an Olympic trial finalist. He was in Dallas. He was looking for an opportunity to build a program. He was second in command there. We chose him because of his coaching accolades, but number two, they have built three aquatic centers in Dallas. I spent my time with Jackie Smith, flying to Dallas this fall break, and looking at design plans, looking at how much it would cost. So, this is not, it's not just a pipe dream. This is something that we've researched, and we have someone that is experienced in building this. So, what do we need? So, we need a long course facility, which means we have a 50-meter pool long, 25 meters wide. We have a second pool, which is our therapy pool. And that therapy pool is, that's where you have a majority of the swim lessons, that's where you have rehab. We will end up having wheelchair access to help people from the medical standpoint as well. We'll have adequate bleachers sitting so we can host regional meets. These are the type of facilities, to be quite frank with you, I've seen in Owensboro and other towns that I think have less medical responsibility than we do. And I hate to get bad to that, but we have 500 hospital beds in Paducah. We're now a Level Two area, so we're taking trauma from all these places where I look at, which have better ancillaries than we have. It's time for us to pick it up and have these facilities. So, our vision, again, is to have two pools side by side. One is our competitive pool, which is Olympics, will be the only Olympic pool within, Jackie, what?
Maybe about a two-hour drive.
Right. So, we will be the host for meets in Western Kentucky as well. Now, how do we get there? Noble Park, again, we've debated around, we've had other offers being out, you know, towards McCracken area. Again, I would like to see this be in the city, for all the reasons I've talked about. I think this will stimulate this Noble Park area. We'll have the Greenway Trail right there. And now, you're talking about having a real, a second, what I call the physical and exercise jewel of Paducah. We're already known for the arts, but I want to be known for the Health Fitness Center of Kentucky. So, we have it right there. It's right laid up for us. You have the outdoor pool, we'll have the natatorium, you have the Greenway Trail. I don't know how, but how much longer, we can go ahead and spruce up the baseball fields. We're going to have an excellent area. You know, people are blown away by our downtown. I think this is going to kind of be the complement that we need. It's conveniently located for the hotels, and I think it'd be a perfect location for Now, as far as the funding is concerned, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So, I'll take the not fund part. The funding, we are, first, I want to tell you all that the figures that we're using are based on Ford Aquatics in Frisco, Texas. The facility that we would like to replicate is that facility, and that's where Coach Chris came from. So, that's how he will be so instrumental in building exactly what we need here. That facility is a for-profit facility, which is an essential point to consider because the man who owns that, actually, there are two men, but the primary man that owns that has considered every way to cut costs and make it as efficient as possible. So, and what happens in a lot of municipal pools, they go, they come in and they build them, they go, oh, they're beautiful. We want this grandiose, beautiful concrete stadium, and we want the stadium, and we want this, and we want that. And it becomes gorgeous, but non-maintainable. So, this man is trying to make his living from this. So, he builds this facility. It's a building that's made of metal, and it has garage doors essentially that run up and down the sides of this building. So, in the summers, and of course, in Frisco, Texas, their summers are much longer, they lift the sides so you don't have air conditioning or any of those things, and you have that airflow, and you don't have to worry about running fans and a lot of the things that generate higher cost in some of the facilities like you'll see in Louisville or Owensboro or whatnot. So, we would like to replicate something like that. So, when we went to Texas and talked with people about this, we talked to Dan, who, Dan is, who I'll reference is the owner from now on, and he is the one who so graciously offered to give us the plans, share with us his plans. We'll, of course, have to have them changed a little bit for Kentucky standards because it matters, there's a lot of regulations and all that, but essentially, that's the plan we're going to go with. And so, all the funds, all the projections we used were based on Frisco, Texas numbers. That may be a little different than what our numbers are here. I think that if anything, our fees may be a little less, but we would rather err and present things on the conservative side to you all. So, to build, we're not going to ask the city for any money to build the facility. That's the first thing I want to say to you. We're going to apply to some local foundations. We're going to try to apply for state funds. One of the benefits of us being in the city is, we are close to government housing. So, I think that we can appeal to the state for additional funding that they might not give us were we not in the city. I think that we are going to be able to, I mean, this vision has been going on in Paducah for years. Mayor Montgomery, what, 20, 25 years ago, envisioned this facility. So, I think there are enough people who are passionate about swim that we're going to be able to conduct a capital campaign with private businesses here. Now, the facility they built in Texas was around $5 million, give or take, because there were some costs that weren't applicable to our facility. But a million of that was the purchase of the property. But a million of that was the purchase of the property. So if we are taking a million off the top, we're looking at a little over four probably. Now, I know on that, I asked them, well, what would that parking lot run you? And he said, we, we gave over a half a million dollars for a parking lot. So if you keep backing out some of the things that I think that we can get donated, I think we can get this as a number that can easily be reached. You know, I don't think it's the astronomical number that when we initially, you know, we went to USA Swim initially and looked at their, their numbers and their numbers were just astronomical. But then when we started looking at the efficient way to do this, we realized that these numbers weren't out of, out of control. Okay, now on maintenance and operation, okay, these are some ways that we can generate funds to maintain the facility. And this is where the city comes in because we want you guys to adopt this and maintain it for us. So we would like to have annual memberships for non-swim team members. Okay? So what that means essentially is just like you would do in a private health club, you would sell memberships, monthly memberships. You would also be able to rent the lanes to the swim team. We would have to pay the city to use the pool. Each high school would have to pay the city to use the pool. Okay? The largest contributor to Ford Aquatics is swim lessons. I would have never guessed that. But Dan told us that the most money that he makes is off, is off of swim lessons. Okay? So we'll, we would operate some sort of a program where, say if Chris Rowe ran the program, which is the head coach, half of the proceeds or part of the proceeds would be paid to the city. We could have aerobics classes, therapy classes, there's all kinds of classes that could be offered there. We could also rent the pool, especially the, the smaller pool, the 25 yard pool, because it's going to be kept at a higher temperature and it's only four feet deep. We'll also have these stands that are made in the, for the bottom to make it even lower for people who are needing rehab. So that said, you'll, you'll be able to rent out to different rehabilitation centers, orthopedic institute, people that need rehab. That's what, you know, that's what we can offer here. Swim meets are huge. I wouldn't even venture to guess what a large swim meet generates in a community. I have no way of knowing that, but I know that the larger meets that we've go to, say in Memphis and Louisville and all, they, they bring in about eight to $10,000 for a large meet. This pool being a long course, it can have two meets going at once. So during the part of the year, we will be able to have double meets essentially. And then in the summer, we would be able to do the long course meets. Summer is long course season from August till about March is short course season. Okay? For those of you who don't, I did not know anything when my daughter started, I didn't even know what the four strokes are. So I'm not a swim veteran, this is all new knowledge to me. So anyway, we would need a, a space for concession stands. We would need, what we would like to do is have some sort of a gala annually and raise money to sock away in an endowment fund. And it could be, and you know how endowment funds are, we could, it could be something that people live, leave money to when they pass. We could have, we could just every year try to set that up and that money, take a portion of that every year to offset some of the cost of the pool. And of course, you can always rent, rent it out for parties and churches and school events, whatever, all those things are a possibility. Okay. Now where do I click? I don't know how to operate this. Okay? All right. Okay. Expenses. We called Dan and said, okay, give us your expenses. He sent us all kinds of expenses that were not relevant, or I put the slide up there. There's, you know, he sent us everything from his USA swims expenses on down. So it was just not relevant, so we just tried to list them for you so you would be able to follow. We need a pool manager. That would be a part-time position, so that could be, that could be Chris, Chris Rowe. That would be the ideal person to do it. He understands how to do the pool that we want, he knows how to be efficient with the chemicals, he knows what it takes to maintain a pool. We need a, some sort of a secretary that would, would handle the clerical position, you know, the bills, the keeping up with the expenses, all those things. We would need a janitor. And when we're having the pool open for open swim, we would need lifeguards. These are the numbers from Frisco, Texas. Okay? So I don't, again, I don't know. I wish I could give you more exact, but this is one of those things, based on the exact square footage, the exact same type of facility, this is what it costs them in Frisco, Texas. For the water in the sewers, $84,000. Electricity and gas, $96,000. The phone and internet, $1,200. The chemicals run $16,800. That's going to be about the same, no matter. That one we checked into and that's about the same here or there. Maintenance, that's a rough number. Again, you know, we feel like about $9,000 a year would more than cover it. That's what he allows for himself. Marketing, that's up to us. 500 a month, that's what we guessed. Cleaning supplies, those are, that's his number, 2,000. And he even included his Pescatrow bill, 1,300. Okay? All that said, I know those numbers are vague and as we got more into it, we can get more specific, but I want you all to just think about what this could add to our community. Swimming is like no other sport because everybody can swim. I watched a little girl compete at the regional championship with one arm and she was a swimmer and she had a round of applause and everybody stood up at the end. It's the only time you can be on a team, you don't have to make the team, you're on the team. We take everybody at every level. And it's, a swim is a lifetime sport too. It's the only sport that I know that, besides say tennis, that carries through and you, you keep on and it, it's changed our life and our family's life personally. Our daughter, her whole countenance has changed since she became a swimmer. I, I don't know how to explain it to you, I don't know what it is, but that there are endless studies proving what it does for ADHD, what it does for childhood obesity. My child now is a straight A student with a great work ethic and all these amazing friends that encourage her and urge her on at her own level. She may not be the star of the team, but she is a part. So I think, you know, if we were going to add anything to this community, this would be the place to start. And we put this natatorium in and we give this back to the community. We have not only the swim team, but we have the rehab facility, we have triathletes, we have all the things that swim can offer. And then we start pushing for our ball fields, our soccer fields and all the other things we need to focus on being a healthy community. I'm so proud that we're an arts community, but I think we need to be a healthy community too. So is there anybody that has any questions? I'll do my best.
I have one, one thing to add. With all those numbers that she said, Dan is making a profit.
Oh, yes. Dan's making a nice profit.
And the other thing I asked him about is, this is a chance to actually make, maybe Paducah's first green, green building in the sense that we can get, you get, so I talked to him, if we get solar power, you get solar and then you, electricity goes down and you can heat the pool with, with solar power as well. So a lot of options that will, this is an opportunity to do that as well.
And that might even help with our funding, our state funding, if we were going to try to do something like that. You know, and, and we definitely can present that. It would just be, you know, it, we just need you all to believe in this with us. If we have the land, we'll, we'll go forward and we'll run with trying to get the funds for the pool. And we will have the design, they have given us some plans, but we will have the extensive plans, which the plans alone, I mean, Shiraz, what would they be? Dan's plans, 15, $20,000 plans?
If that and the
And he's just giving us
He's basically, he's basically handed them to us. So we've saved a lot of money on, by getting the coach that we want because he's basically given us the plans. So we, I think the, the kind of, all, all the stars have kind of aligned because we have someone that has built three aquatic centers, so we're not going to get, he told us how, how he's gotten burned before. He's basically going to spell it out step by step on everything, on how to build a pool, where to get the equipment, what type of pool and so on, and, and cut through all the mistakes that he's made on his first two and how he's built his third. But this pool is much more function over form. It's not going to be as grandiose as I, I would like.
Well, like the Carson Center, but, but it's going to be something that when, when you go inside, it's going to meet everyone's needs in this community. And again, like I said, I can't emphasize enough, when it comes to recruiting young families here, this is, this is what Paducah needs now.
And we, one of the things we are also hoping to do is we want to set up a scholarship fund. And some of the foundations in town, we want to set it up where kids who can't afford to swim can swim. You know, we pay like $130 a month. My daughter's on the senior team. So we pay $130 a month. Not everybody can do that. So we want to set up this scholarship and start working towards a scholarship fund where we will not deny any child in the Paducah area the opportunity to be on the swim team.
So thank you for coming tonight. And I think you've given us a great overview of your vision for this. And, you know, as your plans progress, we'll need, you know, more information, more solid numbers because we'll really need to have a pretty solid number on maintenance cost, a yearly maintenance cost. I know some of this that you've talked about in Texas is a for-profit and some of those things can be managed by Parks Department. I mean, we do, we hire lifeguards for our other pools. So we'll need to see how we can partner together to make your vision a reality, but it also has to align with our budget means also, so.
And I, and I do realize, you know, you can go online and see scary sites about what a pool costs a community. But again, we're trying to do it efficiently. And as far as a more concrete number, I can't give you more and I won't be able to give you more than that because you don't, you know, we'd have to consider like Paducah Power, what the gas would cost here versus, those numbers are the main numbers that you can look at. And if you, if that kind of gives you a projection, if you, if you need some more specifics, you know, if you all would just tell us, like what, do you need to know what, what specifically do we project, maybe how many members there would be in the swim and, and how much they would pay in? I don't know exactly what you need.
So basically, you're talking about raising the money to build the facility and the city would provide the land, Annabomber Field behind there, next to Greenway Trail. And then we would pretty well take it over after that.
Yes. You would. And you would have the guidance of Chris Rowe and, which is the coach. And he's pulled his family up and moved here. He's here, you know, again. And he, he understands how to, how to do this and how to make it work and make money. Now, will it make money here? I don't know that it will, you know, I can't guarantee you that it would ever be a moneymaker. But, you know, just like everything else that is, adds to the community, you know, how much is it worth to you to, to have that here? And it's worth a whole lot to us.
Because the vision, I mean, it's got to be a joint vision. And we can give you numbers all day long, but it's got, at some point, you gotta, and again, I feel qualified in saying this, at some point, we took a plunge and said, we got to build this building in the worst medical times since, you know, in, in modern era of medicine. At, at this point, what does the city want? What does the city need? I mean, this is, we're not coming on just a personal agenda here. I, I don't swim and my kids are going to be done swimming in a matter of seven years and I'll, I'll be done. And, but I want to build something that's going to keep my kids to come back and move here. You know, I'm tired of people going to Louisville and they're going to move to Lexington because that's where the jobs are, because Lexington's going to build a better pool. You know, you, you, we have to get this city to a point where it's a, it's going to, there's other things that are attracting people to move back to this area. So I'm, I'm not looking at this year or next year and how my daughters are doing their swim meets. I'm looking 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road. And at some point, we've got to take, we, because now I'm part of this city, is we've got to jump in and look at what we need to do to improve it and, and to attract young professional people to want to say, I'm, I don't know where Paducah is, but boy, this is a great city. They have the Carson Center, they have an athletic center that's as good as any around in, in, in any state I've been in. Otherwise, you know what's going to happen? Everyone from here is going to move to St. Louis where they can go to any, you can drive down the street and go to 10 different pools because the amenities are there. We've got to create other amenities other than just the arts. And that's got to be a vision that the whole city is going to have to have.
Mayor, do you think it would be appropriate, Jackie and Dr. Patel, if you sat down with the mayor and the city manager and maybe Mark and looked at the sports, you know, our master plan and had the discussion and just kind of talked about your vision and kind of gave you all a place for, to open some dialogue? Would that be a place to start? City manager? We've all sat down and already done that?
We have talked to Mark and he, I, we have, she's shown us the, the master plan and it's amazing. You know, the, the, you know, we would love, and, and like I said to Mark, as soon as we, we can get this under our ballot, I'm all on board for going for the baseball parks is, would be my passion. Then the soccer, I mean, I realize the need, we, we have to revamp. We, we need, we need state funding for some of this too. I mean, the state needs to give us our share. I mean, it's time that we get some funds from the state to build up this end of the state as well as, you know, when you go to these other cities and you see beautiful parks, well, it's, you know, it's time. But if we have a big natatorium right there, I kind of think it might spill over. Well, there has to be a step one, you know? We can't do it all at once. I seriously doubt we're going to be able to get funding all at once for everything we want. So we want to start, and that's the great thing, and Shiraz and I have talked about this, about Paducah, people in Paducah, when we can't get it, we often stepped up and we have capital campaigns and we do fund our own projects. We usually get what we want. But, go ahead.
Yes, we do. We've funded Murray State and funded other projects that we've had to do locally. But what would be the next step if, if we said, okay, you know, to it going into the Noble Park area that you're talking about and that we're fine with that? So could the capital campaign include some money for an endowment that would help to fund going forward, the maintenance and some of those type of things? Or, you know, I think we would almost need to know what projected cost would come to the city budget.
See, that's the confusing
Do raise the money.
Right.
Part for me, because if you've already had the conversation with Mark, Mark has to have some basic numbers because you run a pool. I know this pool is much larger and it's a different animal to a certain extent, but you have some basic numbers here because we're in the business somewhat. So there's the confusing part for me is where the stretch is and where the difference would be. And I know you all know that animal and it's just kind of jumping from one to the other. Like where would the difference be? What's the difference in that?
What, what the steps would be, I guess, first of all, you know, we could say, yes, we'd love to have it there in Noble Park. Second, we would need to know what projected cost for the maintenance if we took it over. And then third, what are your plans for a capital campaign? Are you going to start right away? I mean, yeah.
We are starting right away.
I'll tell you, again, I'm pretty blunt, straightforward, passionate about this. I, I want, if we get the land, we start tomorrow on capital funding and, and, and getting this going. I would, I would like to, I'd like to break ground as soon as possible and get the funding as soon as, I'm confident we'll get the funding.
Yeah, I think the essence of the questions are that with the land, you need the commitment for the operation. And then I think that's the basis for some of the questions and wonderments that you have, so.
The land is the easy one?
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll get involved with Mark and, and we'll identify what some of those questions and methods might be to refine some of those numbers. I think the mayor hit on one of the key things here and that is what aspects of the existing overhead and operation, Parks and Rec could be utilized here to provide even more efficiency. I think there's plenty of opportunity to do some refinement and, and bring maybe a new set of projections back to the commission in, in the short term. Don't you agree, Mark? Yeah?
And I think you could consider if you could raise an additional certain amount for an endowment, that that would, that would help to fund the maintenance?
I do too.
That would help a lot.
That's a part of the plan.
Yeah. And then endowment fund. And then, you know, maybe we'll have a gala every year or some sort of, and continue to contribute to the endowment fund and grow it. That would be, you know, and then I know that there are so many more people past, since, people have crawled out of the woodwork since there's been talk about this. Old parents that had kids that swam 15 years ago have called me and said, hey, listen, we're on board if you, you know, if you, if you need If you, you know, if you need us, we'll step it up and we'll help you. And, you know, so I think that that won't be a problem to come up with an endowment fund. So I don't, you know, I don't look for this pool to make any kind of money. I mean, I've got to be honest and upfront with that. But I do think that it can not be a huge loser, for lack of a better word, a drain on the budget, on the city budget or anything. I think there are enough opportunities to make money with swimming that it could probably do its own. You know, it'll keep us afloat, I'm pretty sure.
I think that could be a next step after we did some refinement on the projections, perhaps to identify what a endowment fund might need to be for the city to be comfortable assuming the operational responsibility. But again, the numbers will drive that when we get a little further down the road.
Would it be helpful to have you, have this person come out, look at the land, and sit face to face with the person that we've consulted? I mean, I would be happy to get him out here, too, if that helps.
We're talking about Dan Mac...
Mark and I will be in touch with you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, Commissioner Galt, I think you have the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the December 1st, 2015 city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Need a second?
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We have a resolution tonight. I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, supporting additional funding for a second annual American Quilt Society quilt show to be held in Paducah commencing in 2017 be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I speak to this?
Sure.
This resolution is a resolution of intent to provide an additional $25,000 per year for a second quilt show to be held in the fall, beginning in the years 2017. This commitment has actually been made by the Convention and Visitors Bureau already. The Convention and Visitors Bureau would like the city to continue in its former and present role whereby we have provided $25,000 per year for the spring quilt show as part of a match, that the CVB matched, that attracts some state matching funds that assist in, I believe, the marketing of the quilt show. So the intent of this resolution would be to provide an additional $25,000, the same amount, for the same purpose, for a second quilt show.
And, you know, that's a $25 million impact with a chance to double that, so it's a good...
I was just looking, about $30,000 visitors for the spring show.
Right, and an equal number for the fall.
Think that would be equal number?
Yeah.
And it's also, I mean, there's so many benefits to it, the second show, among other things, it also doubles the benefit of the amount of convention space that has been dedicated to the first quilt show in the past. So there's some tie-in there as well. It provides a greater return for the investment that the community has and will continue to have in convention space.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under appointments, whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Mari McGarvey and reappoint Stephanie Horton as members of the Civil Service Commission. These terms shall expire December the 9th, 2018.
Second. Mr. Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a recommendation of the mayor, Kayler, in appointing Mari McGarvey and reappointing Stephanie Horton as members of the Board of Civil Service Commission.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jay Page, Wayne Miller, and Basil Drossos as members of the Barclay Regional Airport Authority. These terms will expire December 31st, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jay Page, Wayne Miller, and Basil Drossos as members of the Barclay Regional Airport Authority.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under motions, Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Deed with William C. and Vicki Robertson for 427 North Sixth Street memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department for Local Government for the Renaissance on Main, Paducah Streetscape Enhancement Project, Barclay Regional Airport Authority financial statements for years ended June 30th, 2015 and 14. City of Paducah requests for proposals for professional auditing services for the Electric Plant Board of Paducah. Bids for engineering public works department fuel contract for fiscal year 2016, 2017. JSC Terminal doing business as Midwest Terminal. 10 police pursuit rated SUVs, Linwood Motors, Paducah Ford. Bids for planning department sale of 228 South 17th Street, Brad Arturbin. Bids for police department mobile surveillance camera system, Net Vision 360 Group.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. Under recommendation, let's see, make sure that, stick there. On the recommendation of city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, or the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening. A short list, but pleased to report that they were both internal candidates that are getting significant promotions.
Very good. We'd like to hear that. City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Brad Arturbin in the amount of $5 for purchase of real property located at 228 South 17th Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second.
It's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. Mr. Arturbin does not have any immediate plans for the property, I will say that. He does only adjacent property and maintains that, and he'll continue to maintain this one as well.
Okay, thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under ordinances adoption, Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving change order number one with environmental abatement ink for demolition of a condemned unsafe structure located at 432 Broadway in the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute the approved change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves change order number one for an increase in the amount of $20,933 with environmental abatement ink for various changes necessary to complete the demolition of the condemned unsafe structure located at 432 Broadway, and to extend the completion date to February 26, 2016, therefore increasing the total cost of $479,618, and authorizing the mayor to execute the approved change order.
And we got really good news?
Yes, we did.
We got the CDBG grant?
We did, for $500,000, which is what we asked for. It was the maximum we could ask for. We received a letter yesterday, so pretty pleased about that. They'll host a grant agreement meeting, mayor. I'll let you know when they plan to come down. But we're just waiting for a grant agreement right now.
So, you know, that shows what a team can do, and it was a team effort to apply for this CDBG grant and...
I'm relieved.
We are, too.
I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
Need a second, mayor?
Oh, need a second?
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance conditionally authorizing the non-competitive negotiated award for the steel reinforcing contract for 430 slash 432 Broadway, Paducah, Kentucky, with Darnell Steel and Construction LLC, in an amount not to exceed $19,750 pursuant to KRS 45A.375, and authorizing the mayor to execute the forcehead contract, provided, however, approvals obtained from the Community Development Block Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes a non-competitive award to the sole representative, responsive and responsible bidder for contract two, steel reinforcing work, which will reinforce the existing steel columns underneath the steel beam to stabilize the exterior wall of 430 Broadway in Paducah, the building adjacent to and associated with the demolition of 432 Broadway in Paducah. Darnell Steel and Construction LLC with a bid of $19,750, provided, however, the award is approved by the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
We have received that approval, by the way. Received it Friday. Community Development Block Grant Program did approve our procurement process, so by approving, awarding the contract tonight, we are ready to sign a contract.
So is that ready to start back? Up on that project?
I can answer that. The prime contractor, EAI, the demolition contractor, is a little reluctant to begin demolition work on those upper stories, knowing that steel reinforcement work is going on below them. They have some concerns that if anything should go wrong, they might injure some of those workers. So they're reluctant to start back until the steel reinforcement work is finished. I have scheduled a pre-construction meeting for Friday morning with the steel contractor, pending year-rolls award. And so he should be able to get to work hopefully next week. We'll work out that schedule on Friday. And his contract is a short contract, two to three weeks at the most. So we're hoping by the early part of the first of the year, he should be able to start demolition work again.
Good. Same.
Just a process, isn't it?
It's a process, slow one, but yes.
Unfortunately, it's been a bit of a discovery process.
Yes, it has.
And we certainly have to consider the safety of the public above all else when we're doing that.
Correct. I will let you know there'll be a third contract for this project as well. Once the demolition is complete, a 432 Broadway, then that masonry wall that will enclose the lower floor of 430 Broadway, we'll begin construction on that. Bids are being opened on that contract on Friday, the 18th. So we've got them lined up and ready to go as soon as everything's finished with the demolition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for sale to the city of one Ford 4x4 3/4 ton four-door pickup truck, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Paducah Ford in the amount of $28,948 for sale to the city of one Ford 4x4 3/4 ton four-door pickup truck for use by the Parks Services Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Linwood Motors for sale to the city of two 2016 Dodge Charger SSV vehicles for use by the Fire Prevention Division of the Paducah Fire Department, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Linwood Motors in the total amount of $53,146 for two 2016 Dodge Charger SSV vehicles for use by the Fire Prevention Division of the Paducah Fire Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We're going onto ordinances introduction, so we don't vote on these tonight. And Commissioner Rhodes has one that the city manager may want to say a few things to afterwards.
Okay, well, I'll talk extra fast to give you more time. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the proposal for financial audits for, for Electric Plant Board DBA Paducah Power System for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the proposal of Williams, Williams &amp; Lynch, LLP, certified public accounts, for financial audits for Electric Plant Board DBA Paducah Power System for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2016, 17, 18, and 19, for a total sum not to exceed $61,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
Second.
I'll just say something. Jonathan's here to talk about it, and because of the Little TVA Act, it provides that an annual audit shall be made of the operations of the Electric Power Board.
That's correct. And the city does not bear any of the cost, and the staff and PPS will handle all the administration. So it's just, I guess, a formality for the city commission to approve what they've recommended.
Right, they select the auditor?
Yes.
And then they bring it to us for our approval or disapproval?
Correct.
And if we disapprove of their auditor, they would have to go back and...
Start all over again.
Right.
I'd just comment that this has been a requirement of Paducah Power forever.
Yes.
Eventually, you might recall a couple of years ago, Senate Bill One passed the legislature in response somewhat to a felt need on the part of the state and the auditor's office to make sure that there was better financial accountability on the part of local boards and commissions. And we recognized at the time that because of the Little TVA Act, you know, Paducah Power had been doing this annually. There's been some question as to whether Paducah Power does an annual audit or not, and just want to use this opportunity to stress the fact that, yes, they do, and they have, and will continue to do so under the requirements of the Little TVA Act, in addition now to the requirements of the former Senate Bill One. I forget the name of that bill, John. Perhaps you remember it, but...
Senate Bill One?
Senate Bill One. There've been a couple of Senate Bill Ones in the years since...
Probably, yeah.
That particular year was Senate Bill One. Okay.
All right. Thank you, John. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Paducah Ford for sale to the city of 10 2016 police pursuit rated SUVs for use by the Paducah Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Paducah Ford in the total amount of $331,844 for the purchase of 10 2016 police pursuit rated SUVs for use by the Paducah Police Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
My chief?
Hello, good evening, mayor, commission. Nothing new. It's our annual allotment for vehicles that are coming up for replacement within the fleet trust fund.
I know you're switching to SUVs because they have a better resale at the end of life, or there were several, you analyzed it, and there were reasons why you wanted to switch to an SUV, which has been talked about...
That is one of those, correct, yes. There are several different reasons, but largely in part, manufacturers are driving There are several different reasons, but largely in part, manufacturers are driving what's available to us. So when we look at that, the storage space within those smaller sedans, for lack of a better explanation, is just decreasing. Officers are not, the gear that they have to carry is not decreasing along with that, unfortunately. So we're running out of space inside. We currently have some issues now where we have training officers that have a partner in the passenger seat, and there's just absolutely no room for them. So that's one of the larger driving factors for that. Excuse me. Yes, the resale value is almost double what the upfront cost is, increased upfront cost.
So overall, it's a better deal?
Oh, absolutely, much better.
That's the point I'm trying to make, that I've been asked about. Overall, having SUVs is a better deal.
Absolutely, for several reasons.
Through the life of the vehicle, yes.
And these are pursuit vehicles?
They are. And I would qualify the SUV, this is a midsize SUV. This is not the full-size, the grandiose vehicles that are out there.
And clearly, other, I mean, we're not at the lead of this parade. I mean, it's been a switch for several years now, but you miss parties everywhere in this country.
Correct.
We all have the same problems.
Correct, yeah, largely in part driven by Ford's pulling back of the common, the workhorse that was out there, the Crown Victoria, which drove us to make some decisions that we, we were pretty comfortable with what we had. It was working for us. It drove the industry to step back and reanalyze things and make some different decisions.
In fact, these will not be the first of these to be on the streets of Paducah and McCracken County.
That's correct.
The McCracken County Sheriff Office has run them for a while.
They have a couple of them, I believe.
Some anyway, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of JSC Terminal LLC DBA Midwest Terminal for the city's fuel supply for the 2016 and 2017 calendar years, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts the bid for JSC Terminal LLC DBA Midwest Terminal for the city's supply of gasoline, diesel fuel, and diesel fuel off-road at oil price information service, price plus a daily adjustment of 0.09 per gallon, cents per gallon, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. Said contract is for a period of two years and contains two additional one-year options to renew if both parties agree.
Mayor, Commission, that's pretty self-explanatory. It just keeps our...
Need a second, just a minute. Need a second on that. Okay.
Keeps our fleet moving for, I guess, all the vehicles that serve the community in their day-to-day functions.
And price of fuel continues to go down?
We're enjoying that as well.
Because it's not, wasn't too long ago, it was pretty high.
I think, I think, John, we budgeted like, I don't know, like over $3, $3 a gallon this year in our budget, $2.75, and it's going down, so it helps us.
Well, West Texas crude yesterday was at $38 a barrel.
Yeah. Okay, and we've come off in excess of $100 a barrel in the last few years, so that's good.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I'd like to know, I would just like to know why I get to read this, but that's okay. I think it's a plot. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the supplemental agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Highways and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the riverfront improvement project Phase 1B, and authorizes the mayor to execute same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves and authorizes the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Highways for additional reimbursement funding in the amount of $1,525,000 for the completion of the riverfront redevelopment project Phase 1B. This deal funding increases the total funding to $5,445,000.
Second.
What a deal.
Oh, it's a button underneath your leg. It's underneath your leg, Joe.
And so, you know, I just want to clarify, because there has been some talk about the money that we received, and this money the governor got for Paducah, Kentucky was specific to the riverfront project. That money's to be used for riverfront redevelopment. You know, there's been a lot of people say, well, why can't you use that for other things? Well, it's because it was given specifically for the riverfront, and I just want that to be clear. All right? Absolutely.
You can't change it for another project.
No, you cannot.
It was specific to that.
Right. Right. I mean, he even said it.
He did.
He didn't say, I'm just going to throw this out there and you all can just, wherever you need it. He said, the riverfront.
And we're expecting paperwork this year that we document that that's how it's been.
Well, that's the contract that we have in your package there for that, so that's what we'll be agreeing to for this ordinance introduction, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a mobile surveillance camera system for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for use by the Paducah Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Net Vision 360 Group in the total amount of $45,643.50 for the purchase of a mobile surveillance camera system for use by the Paducah Police Department and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mayor, Commission, here again, a small explanation of this. It's a, essentially, if you've seen those portable generated light plants on two wheels you pull behind a vehicle, it's a generator, has a telescopic pole with a camera on that with some lighting to go along with that. This is a step to increase or improve upon our fixed cameras that we've installed on the flood wall through the last two, three, four years. So there are several areas within the infrastructure that we have that we're not able to access readily. This would be one way to secure some of that infrastructure.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
City Managers' Report.
The process of procuring a transfer station, a facility going forward for receiving solid waste and recyclables is nearing completion. We specified in the RFP that the award date would be December 8. That is being modified now to January 12. However, being December 8 today, I did notify the two bidders on this, that would be Republic Services of Kentucky, who is the incumbent, and also Freedom Waste Services of Mayfield, who also bid it, that based on the review of the proposals and the evaluation by our consultant, that it would appear at this time that Freedom Waste is the proposer that is best qualified to provide the services to the city. And in accordance with that, we are working on an agreement with Freedom Waste to be brought forward to you in January. We've also notified both bidders that we're exercising our rights under KRS to withhold specific information about both proposals until the award is made. So we're very close to bringing that contract forward for you. Want to mention, as I think a lot of people are aware, a couple of weeks ago, we sent out some information about our annual fall leaf pickup. It's a good program. It's not a program that every city offers. It's a program, like all programs, that has certain requirements for it. And our basic requirement for leaves to be picked up is that they be bagged and placed